Good evening. Ready to call this. It's today, July 18th, the July 18th meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Thank you, everybody for being here. I brought a flower today because I feel like we should celebrate. This milestone of our meeting tonight is primarily to review. A draft of the town plan. Whether we love it, have a lot of work to do on it. It's still a milestone, I think worthy of recognition. David, thank you very much for. All the work and all the effort. It's been many, many months of. Meetings and public engagement and a forum and online surveys and. Working with the new town planner to like hit the ground running. Um, so I feel really optimistic that over the next month. We're going to be able to work with what we have and produce really excellent plan for the town. So thank you, everybody for being here and thank you for all your work. Leading up to tonight's meeting. I know there was a lot of homework. Sabina.
Sorry, that's clapping, not a hand raised.
Oh, okay. Great, thank you. Okay, so um. For the agenda tonight, we'll have a brief public comment will approve minutes. The bulk of the time will be spent reviewing the draft of the town plan. Um, I appreciate everyone being willing to work with the structure that Linda and I set up. Hopefully it's not too confining. And if it turns out that it's not working for us, then we'll have to, you know, kind of rethink things. But we were trying to figure out how to get the most amount of feedback compiled. In the most efficient way from all of us as opposed to. You know, like a marathon editing session. Um, so we'll do that and then we will have a separate time for public comment related specifically to the town plan. Discussion that we would have just had and we'll wrap up and plan for our next meeting. Uh, does anybody have any changes or adjustments or? Objections to the agenda set forth. Set forth. Okay, and we have um. Some time parameters that we are going to work very hard to. Stick within so that we can try to get through the entire plan. Um, okay, so the next item on the agenda is a public comment. So thank you for coming. Um, if you would step forward, please and share your comment with the Planning Commission. Introduce yourself. For the record, yes, and that um, that's a microphone for you.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
My name is Peter Erlich. I live here in Jericho over on Stunk Hall Road. Um, I'm new to the area. I moved in this year. Um, and I, I hope you don't mind. I brought some notes here. Um, but I'm here to learn. I'm excited to learn more about the plan, but I. I wanted to say something about about carbon dioxide. Um, we've all seen the effects of climate change, whether it's ticks or maple syrup. Or the severe flooding we've seen. Um, and we know that this is also the coolest summer. Any of us are likely to experience for the rest of our lives. Um, what's less well known is the swift advancement of technology. Um, the Rocky Mountain Institute. Has done studies on home construction over the past few years. From southerly regions to northerly ones like ours. And they have found that if you look at the total cost of ownership. The the net present cost of building a new construction home with no fossil fuel appliances. And fully electrification. Um, is less, it's less because it takes less to operate one of those homes. Than it does to build one with fossil fuels. Our neighboring cities such as Burlington and South Burlington. Have acted upon us. They've said, we're not going to have new fossil fuels in our cities. And they have joined more than a hundred cities across the US to have say to say no. Um, I'm asking that we here invest in our community. Invest in economic justice for renters in keeping utility costs low and to invest in our plan. By following similar ordinance. Um, this will also keep us in line with the Global Warming Solutions Act. At which we're legally bound to follow in the state of Vermont. Um, I've already forwarded the details to the Planning Commission, including the studies I've mentioned. And the ordinance as seen Burlington and South Burlington. Which is careful to make sure that it's not too restrictive of technologies used. And to make sure that it's not forcing electrification in situations that just don't make sense. Uh, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Very, very timely based on tonight's discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else from the public wish to offer a general comment to the Planning Commission? Okay. Then we will move on to approve the minutes of June 20th. Do I have the motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Sarah, thank you. Motion second or second the motion.
Second.
Chris, any discussion or edits or clarifications or corrections on the minutes? Okay, so all those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Sabina?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Okay, so then the next topic is item number five, five to talk about the town plan. So as I said at the outset, we just received at the end of last week, the first draft of the town plan. And we also um. Completed our last for the time being question of the month. Which asked people questions about the high level themes that we anticipated the town plan draft would contain. So Linda is gonna walk us through that and the reason why I wanted to do the question of the month first. Is to just remind us that as we're thinking about edits and comments and feedback. Part of our role is to really channel what we've heard from the public. And so I thought it would be good to be reminded. Of our most recent uh, feedback from the public.
Great, okay. Um, so I'm gonna try to just get through this quickly here so that we can get into the meat of the plan review, but um. This month. We asked about the themes and this is the same question that we. Asked to the public at the farmer's market, well, we being Susan and Sabina and Sarah. I think brought this question to the farmer's market. Um, to get feedback there and then we put it online. So I want to read. So. We had five broad themes that we saw emerging from the feedback we got on the town plan. And we wanted to sort of bet them with, we wanted to bet them for the public, to the, with the public to see whether they agree, sort of agree or don't agree. Um, and so we got 151 responses in the online survey when we had this posted. And the five broad themes um. We asked, do you agree? Somewhat agree or not agree? And then we also gave the opportunity for folks to provide a comment about what answer they chose. Um, and so I will go through the questions one by one and the first, first question Jericho as a community should be. Um, and the first one was welcoming and inclusive, and I want to read all of the things that were included in this umbrella of welcoming inclusive. Um, so it says offering housing choices and quality of life, housing choices for all incomes, life stages and household types. Quality schools are hubs for community life, childcare, senior services and walkable neighborhoods. So in response to that question, we got uh mostly yeses, 69% said yes, 20% said maybe and 11% said no. And I went through all the ones that said maybe and no to sort, to try to categorize. Their comment or their feedback into like. A jet, a more general reason why concern or reason why they were maybe not in agreement. And for this one. The primary concern was either loss of rural, this would be to a loss of rural character. There was concern about what someone perceived as overdevelopment. So comments along the lines of like, we're not Williston, we're not, we don't want to be like South Burlington. We don't want large apartment complexes, things like that. So that was the. Primary concern of folks that said maybe or no to this question. And then other comments uh were related to the financial cost. Uh, and there were some comments that. Thought that this was not a role that the town should be playing and some folks that just needed more information because this was such a broad and encompassing. Question that they didn't feel like they could. Categorically say yes to everything that was included. So the next question was, uh, Jericho as a community should be.
Excuse me, Linda, when you had the. You, you gave us the no and the maybes. What kind of comments were under the yes? Or were any comments provided under that?
There weren't as many under the yes, except enthusiasm generally. If someone said yes, like, yes, we should definitely be doing this. Um, so I didn't feel the need to kind of, I didn't go through and categorize all of them. They were generally just enthusiasm.
Okay.
Yeah. So the next one was Jericho as a community should be resilient. And it says, for example, protecting our environment and ecology, nature and green space, forests and farms. Wildlife habitats, scenic views, outdoor recreation, renewable energy adaptive to climate change. So for this question, again, lots of yeses, 81% said yes to that. And then for the maybes and noes, the um typical concerns that were expressed when they were expressed were needing more information. Again, it's just a broad topic and. Um, some people were not willing to say categorically yes to everything that was on the list. Uh, overdevelopment and loss of rural character uh was another concern. And then a few folks that said, no, they didn't think this was a role for the town to be planning. So the next one. Jericho as a community should be vibrant, for example, growing our local economy and social networks. Prosperous walkable village centers, everyday services are here, community gatherings and events. Schools are activity hubs. We support entrepreneurship and have a strong rural economy. So again, we got a lot of yeses on this, 72% and then maybes and noes, the general concerns were. Needing more information. In terms of it being, again, a lot of things under one umbrella. Um, there were, was some feedback about concern of. Uh, overdevelopment and loss of rural character again, and. Again, some folks saying that they did not think that that was the role for the town to be playing. So similar, similar categories to the other questions of people that had concerns. And then the next one, Jericho as a community should be connected. And this one includes common infrastructure for the common good, connecting people in places, develop shared services and utilities such as wastewater, water, fire. Uh, fire safety, telecommunications, transportation and mobility, bike and pedestrian connections and infrastructure. Um, so again, this one had wide support, 68% said yes, um, and then the maybes and noes were. Primarily uh focused around needing more information. Um, I, I think on this one more than other categories, folks were. Uh hesitant to say a blanket yes. To uh everything that was included under the umbrella specifically because there were social aspects and some infrastructure aspects. Um, so not, not, you know, not wanting to say yes to everything. A few people did articulate yes to this and this, but not sure about these ones. Um, so that was generally the feedback on that. And then the last question. Jericho as a community should be strategic, for example, ensuring town resources can support the town goals. A proactive inclusive government, informed and transparent decision making. Add staff capacity, respond to challenges, prepare for change, invest in the future and has strong volunteer networks. Again, mostly yes, 73% said yes to this one. And so folks that said maybe. And no were primarily. Do uh leaving comments related to the financial cost taxes, I think was the major. The major one that came up under this question. And some folks needed more specific info, asking things like, well, what kind of staff do we need? Just unsure about um where the need was and exactly what type of. Positions or staffing was going to be proposed. Um, so that was, I thought overwhelmingly encouraging uh that we seem to be on the right track, the themes that. Um, emerged from all the feedback from the community.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Surprises?
I think that was generally.
Not surprises.
I looked at the perspective of the noes and the maybes and. It. From what you've said, I would interpret that. The broad categories that we gave. Were too nebulous for most people to say, for those people to say. 100% I'm for this. When this is basically a shopping cart full of who knows what that's in it.
Yeah.
So that to me says, one of our jobs. Is to provide a better definition of what this is. If we want to win those people over.
Yeah, and I think the text of the town plan does get into more detail, does get to the finer details. We have the, the chapter headings which kind of follow along with the themes. I think they all do.
Yeah.
Follow along with the themes.
Yeah, the wording is a little bit different on a couple of them, but they're each, the chapters of the draft are those questions. So you're right, if we. Do a good job with explaining, then people will have the information to know, is this something I still support? Or I support these parts of it, not these other parts of it? Yeah.
Yeah.
In general, those are mom, palm and app, mom and apple pie kind of questions.
Right.
When you have people are saying, hmm, maybe not. That speaks to the need to clarify for them.
Right. Okay, anything else on that, on the question of the month? Thank you, Linda. Okay, so now we will get to the um crux. Sounds like David, you have a couple of ways that you're gonna help us structure. So. I just want to. Set the stage for the discussion, especially for members of the public who are here. That um my. Expectation is that the outcome of this discussion. Will be revisions and a new draft. And exactly how that happens, we haven't figured out yet. So. Your mission, should you choose to accept it, I did go see Mission Impossible. Um, is we're basically hopefully creating a high level list of. Edits and also including that a list of things that should not be eliminated. Because I think uh we all agree that it's still too long and needs to be shortened. So it's much easier to shorten than it is to lengthen. Um, so that's the outcome that we're going for. And I asked each um Planning Commission member. To review a couple of specific chapters and to identify. Your um top three concepts about what's written that should definitely stay in the plan. What's written that could be eliminated from the text or potentially moved to a different location or linked somewhere. Or and. Is, are there still things that are missing from that particular chapter that you were reviewing? And then we asked everybody to review the overview part, the future land use map and the um, and the action items. Um, I personally think it's definitely too long and needs to be uh shortened. And um the structure of it, I think, could be. Tightened up and kind of more meticulously structured so that every time we use a word, we use the same word over and over again. Every time we have a subheading in each chap, that each chapter is structured identically. I'm not worried about getting there. Um, I think that will be much easier to do once we have the content basically nailed. Um. There's, I think, some inconsistencies, like some chapters have data and some chapters do not have data. Some chapters refer to the eight months of public input that we have and some chapters. Don't actually, I think the majority of the chapters probably don't. Say enough about, we heard this and we heard that and we had. Even though we are gonna have an appendix that will analyze all of our public engagement. I think it would be helpful to have the justification for some of the. Actions to be rooted in what we heard from the public in the text. Um, some of the chapters talk about zoning implications, but not all of them. Uh, and some of the chapters. Uh, have. A lot of generic information about planning and I think it's gonna be tricky to balance. When we want to include information about planning so that the average person who's not immersed in planning. Has the appropriate background and context, but not so much. That we're like giving a college course on planning in our town plan. And so maybe thinking about how to link to stuff and how to provide. Callouts of people aren't, don't really need that information. Um. And that, I think there's some kind of discussion about whether or not we want to have. Uh, all of our actions at the end or the actions distributed among chapters. Um, and the reason I'm going through this list is to just calm everybody down that. That's already on my list, so don't. And, and tonight is not the only night. We basically have a month to work on the document. And so email, phone calls, meetings with Linda, there are many, many opportunities. So the, the, the big point of today is to figure out like, how close are we? Where are, where are areas of that where we need more work? Because we among ourselves don't necessarily agree with the priorities of a certain chapter. And that's why we had more than one person assigned to each chapter. Okay, so that's our mission. We, have we accepted the mission? Okay. So. Now I have this, the, do we want to, so we want to do intro and vision first? Right, okay.
Can you actually, can we just talk about the format of the document first or?
Um.
That too broad?
Nope, that's not too broad. So.
Similar to what you just said, can I give a couple of comments?
Yes.
Okay, similar to what you just said overall about the document, I agree that it's too long. Um. I think that. We buried the lead deep in the document. It took me until like page 10 before I was like, what is the point of this document? I want it to scream at me on the first page. I also appreciate. The thank you to these people who made it happen. I think that should go at the end again, because we're burying the lead. I think it's valid, it's important that people know who participated and how important that is, but. I just, I want it to be in big bold letters at the beginning. Here's, here's what this is about. And I feel like I read a six-page introduction with a lot of beautiful pictures and I was just. I was. It was pleasant. And I was lost and I almost stopped reading. So that is my feedback about the structure of the document.
I didn't hear the last sentence.
I was saying that with the pictures and everything, it was pleasant and lovely. But I didn't want to read it anymore because I was like. Lost as to what the point was. It's a great, it's a beautiful document. There's a lot of beautiful places in Jericho that are in the document and I think that's really grounding. So I wouldn't say to take that out. But I think we buried the lead. It's not immediately apparent. What it is that we're trying to do or what the main goals are.
Yeah, I don't remember. One of, somebody here. Said it might have even been Heidi, that the goals are on page 79. Is that you?
Yeah.
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 That, and you want the goals or we want the goals, I think on like page one.
Right, yes.
One, two or three at least.
Like.
Right.
We, like, here are the goals. Keep going.
Right.
Not like welcome and.
Yeah.
Get a cup of coffee and sit down for a long read. I almost was like, nope, I will not.
Right, right, okay. Any other general questions about format or structure or tone?
I, I, tone, I thought like it was a good narrative, but sometimes it got a little too casual.
Mm-hmm.
Like, I, I understand that, like, like, look, reading at the former plan like that is what. It's, it's light years in terms of tone and I, I think in terms of accessibility for a reader. But then I was like, hmm, there are parts that just need a little bit of sharpening for tone, I think.
Mm-hmm.
But it's, you know, it's all doable. But I totally concur about, and we've all just said that, about moving things up, like on page 47 is like. Perhaps the highest priority initiative in the entire document, like, well, that shouldn't be on page 47.
Yeah, yeah, I have the same comment. Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I thought. But we're all on the same page there and there, there are ways in which that we can restructure.
Yeah.
I think we're all on the same page, Chris.
Yeah, does anybody disagree?
Yeah.
No, okay.
I, I would just echo it. Was too casual for what's a very formal, very prescriptive document. And. Yeah, the page 79 for here's what we have to do is just. Took a long time just to get to page 79.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Fortunately with Word, cut, paste, right? But I think conceptually, it reflects. Eight months worth of discussion, like it's in there. The need is, is in there. We just need to call it out stronger, position it better. Yeah, organize it a little bit more. Yeah. Okay, so.
See Sabina on their screen with the screen share? We just don't wanna.
Uh, true. So can you see Sabina on your screen? So Sabina, if you have a question and we don't see your hand raised or you have a comment, will you just pipe up?
I will shout out in my biggest New York voice.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so now let's move on to. The intro and the vision. So I think we just got some good feedback about the intro just in general, like a lot of that material can go. Out or later.
Yeah, so part, part of this, what I put together was something that can go on the website to accompany the plan to. Just as an overview, so we don't need to talk about. The process or what the town plan is and why we're doing this. Um, these are, these are what yours. What you saw at the end because as. I'm writing all of these different chapters and different thoughts are coming up at different times. It all kind of gets summarized at the end and I totally agree that it. It's easy to move things around uh to make sure that they get presented in a clear way. Um, so uh, this is just the outline. So introduction.
So it seems like what we're saying is the master plan and what is a master plan and how it's organized. Probably could be elsewhere.
Mm-hmm.
And um.
But not if you've never looked at one before.
No, but. Maybe.
Shorten.
Much more, yeah, much more concise with then read more about town plan.
At the end, then. It's kind of lost, but I agree that it could be shortened.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's some things in here that we can take out. And, and tighten up particularly the. What comes at the end of this, the, are the key challenges and issues and what the important next steps are. That's intended to be. Here are the highlights. Here's the lead. Here are the things that if you look at, as it said, if you read nothing else. Read this part in order to get at. What is it that we're trying to do?
But you, and that part stated two issues, housing and climate change. That those were the two most important issues that are basically driving the plan.
Yeah.
That was the message.
Yeah.
Um.
And everything else then.
Falls.
Is related to those two issues in one form or another.
Right, so I guess there is sort of a, a, a difference about. If we think. We want to present the evidence. And then present. The conclusion, meaning the challenges and then the goals, or do we want to present the goals and then here's how we got here?
Well, I, I'm on the um. Maybe the extreme end of less is more. Um, so I think in general. Uh, I would, I mean, I, as I read through this, it's very, it's very, I felt like I was taking a college class in town planning. Um, and there's a tremendous amount of information which is. Important to have and really useful, but I think a lot of that can go in volume two. And I think in my. Feeling in general is that volume one should be really short. And almost bullet points, doesn't even need text in, in general, I think it's just like, these are the priorities. These are the, and, and for each section, then it could be a hyperlink to. Volume two, which has all the supporting information. But I think if you. In my experience, if you try to present the supporting information in the plan. You get bogged down by, by it and you don't get to the important parts. And you lose interest by page 15 and you've missed most of it. And so I think for, to be a working usable document for most people. It needs to be just. Really short and just get to the high points. And then all the support information, we need to have it, we do have it.
Yeah.
Goes in volume two and then there's just links.
So don't make the argument.
No.
Don't make the argument, right?
No.
No, don't make the argument, just make.
If somebody wants to find out what the reasoning is. They, it's right there. They can get to it.
So that, or maybe make the argument as succinctly and as briefly and excessively as possible. No argument.
I totally agree with Chris. So the Heinsberg Town Plan is like the table of contents.
Yeah.
And then the top priorities and it says they're, they're in bullets. And then the top priorities, and it says, they're, they're in bullets, just like he said, and it says in bold, really big. Things, top priority actions, and it gives a two-sentence thing saying that these are the things, and they, this is what's required. Address the critical issues, require timely response, readily achievable existing goals, blah, blah, blah. And then it tells, it gives what it is, and then it says the action and the time horizon, and the who's the lead? People, like, like the, like the getting it done section does. But it's just right there and that's it. I, I even would take the getting it done section and not have it be a table, but have it be more bulleted. And put that right after the table of contents. And just like, okay, you don't, you do not have to go far, scroll through the table of contents, boom, there it is in your face. Oh, wait, how did I get here? Well, I need to learn more about the third thing on this list. Great, it tells you, go back up to the table of contents if you want to read more.
Okay, so.
So just put, for me inside my mind, those little pie charts said. That sixty to eighty percent of the people want to do the things and said green light.
Right.
They're gonna read the list and say green light, and then they're gonna be done reading.
Right.
The other people who said they need more information are gonna keep going. The rest of the document is for those other twenty to forty percent of the people.
So putting structure and format aside just for a minute, housing and climate change, are those the two correct? Drivers for the plan for the next eight years?
Infrastructure fall into that.
It, it falls into a tool.
Infrastructure necessary.
Yeah, means to an end.
As well as.
But it's.
Adapting the climate.
Only, the only thing that I think those might miss, which we've heard a lot about is that. The idea of connections like. Trails and, you know, alternative.
Yeah.
Modes of getting around, that's been a pretty big thing.
But you can tie that, you can tie that back to climate change.
That's, that's getting people. Out of their car.
That's one, that's one motivation, but it's not the only motivation. So you're suggesting that potentially there's a higher order of motivation.
That was something we've heard over and over again, over the last few years. So it, you could put it under the umbrella of climate change, but that doesn't answer all of. It doesn't speak to the motivations of the people we've heard from.
Right, 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 yes, okay.
Looking for climate change, they want to be able to take their bike for bike, or they might go for a walk in the woods, they want to be.
Okay, housing, climate change, connectivity, kind of setting up the chapters.
At the end of the day, if we're coming out of this, which we have. Biggest single recommendation that we have coming out of it is, get water sewer infrastructure. It's across the board, that's the number one thing we have. So to me, that's probably the most important message we're coming out of the town plan. We can't do anything without water and sewer infrastructure.
True, but I'm asking about the why.
The why comes after, this is what we.
I'm not, forget about the order.
Yeah.
I'm just wanting to make sure that we have the right content. So the chapters, we have a chapter about connectivity, we have chapters about infrastructure, which are all things that we're gonna do. Why? So that's what I want to make sure that we are clear about the why. David has drafted a draft that says the why are housing and climate change. And my question to this group is, is that the, the two things, and Chris is saying, I'd like to see a third, suggesting a third. I could totally buy that, which is connectivity, not necessarily getting around, just the conversation we just had. If those were the three whys, that was, were driving the rest of the content, does the group, is that? Not that it's everything, it's not the chapters, it's, it might come later.
Because the reason for doing the infrastructure is housing.
Right, right.
Where is natural, preserving the, the rural natural feel of Jericho fit into that?
You could put that under climate resilience.
Right.
Resiliency, climate resilience.
Right.
I mean, that might not have been the motivation that people spoke of when they said we want to protect our rural character. They, they did not probably, or meant some of them, most of them did not specifically say, and I want to. Have carbon equation in the forests, but that is certainly.
Right, or we're so wedded, which is fine, to our five categories. That we don't need a separate rationale, we just need to outline, these are the five most important things that we're working on. And forget about deciding two or three otherwise, that, that's, we're just gonna lay it out there. Maybe that would be the most comfortable.
Right, because it does add a whole other layer.
Right.
Then you're thinking about like, oh, that fits under this theme, like that one doesn't quite fit.
Right.
What about public safety? And so, like, it, it does add another organizational.
So I had.
Lot easier to add than it is to detract.
Yes, so I had sort of a question about the, the goals, well, maybe before we go to. Goals, we could go to vision, which is probably the next one.
Yeah. There's just two parts to this, there's the declaration of inclusion, and then there's the, the vision statement, which. Kind of crafted together from a variety of different places. It may not be the vision statement that you want, but that's something I'm gonna need, perhaps you all to maybe do some words with them.
Okay.
If you, if you want it to be good.
So did anybody want to offer feedback on the vision right here, right now?
What I thought that was perhaps missing was the importance of just habitat in the first paragraph, like we're talking about, let me get to that page. And I've been through this document so many times and I can't find.
Twenty, page twenty.
Twenty.
Not number page twenty, but, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, but it's in the first paragraph here.
While you're looking, I will say, normally the planning commission has a policy not to look at phones and computers during our meetings. Because we don't want anybody to think that anybody's messaging each other back and forth, so we never do it. But we, we're not never, but at this meeting, because we're going through this document, we agreed that we could use our laptops. Only to look at the document.
I guess this is connectivity or our natural system, natural ecosystems. It doesn't explicitly say habitat protection, but that's something that we have heard over and over again, so I, I. And again, that's word smithing, but.
Yeah, Heidi had some word smithing on vision, which I think I can share with you in email, any other comments on the vision?
I thought it was, um, way too wordy and not to get too pedantic about it, but it was like, I was reading a Conde Nask, here's what to go when you're Jericho kind of thing. It's like, come on. We can shorten it up a lot.
Yep, okay.
But the, the intent is right.
Yep. Um, okay.
I do think the declaration of inclusion needs a bit of context and another image.
Or, or no image, yeah, Heidi said the same thing, yeah.
And the other thing about the, um, the declaration of inclusion is that. I was in a conversation with SJ that there may be one slight, um, edit to it, which. Hopefully would happen officially before we publish this, but just knowing, knowing that it may, um. The language may change ever so slightly as, as based on some feedback that SJ got, um, just keep that in mind. It's not, even though it was approved by the select board, it may undergo some minor editing.
Okay, then the next section was about. Building a resilient community, stewarding a resilient community. Um, so what David's showing on the screen is kind of the highlights, it's almost like David, like. Because you did these highlights for this meeting, I almost think like. That. Could be like eighty percent of the plan, honestly, no, right?
It is, yeah, delete, yes.
Right, it's much easier to delete and it's.
I think it's deleting, I think it's moving.
Just separating.
Yeah.
To volume two.
Yeah.
I think ninety, most of what is there should be there, but I think it should be in volume two.
Okay, so the people, so Sabina and Wendy reviewed resilient, so Wendy, you want to go first?
And Eric.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I wrote down.
I reviewed the entire thing, so I'm, I'm an overachiever then.
Eric's ready to comment.
Okay, Eric, you go first.
No, I'll go last.
Okay.
Sabina, do you want to jump in? I mean, I'm happy to jump in if you.
Go, go ahead, I have to get my papers in front of me.
Okay, well, one, one comment I had, which is, it's, I should have mentioned this during the structural conversation, is that. The Jericho is committed list, the, on the, in the call-out boxes. I'm not sure, like, what, what do we do with that? Like, what's the relationship between, is that used in decision-making? How does that relate to action, priority lists, like?
What does it mean?
What does it mean? What, what is its role?
What were you thinking?
So what I'm thinking is those are, those are the, you know, lack of a better word, those are the goals, that's what we're trying to achieve. These are the thing, or these are the principal policies that we're looking to pursue.
But then they don't show up like in actions, or sometimes they don't show up in next steps or priorities, so I feel like they're floating for me, like I don't. I don't know what, how are we accountable to those things, if they not, if they don't show up in an implementation plan? Like, I think they're, they're value statements.
But there's more, there's specificity around, so if it's, if it's conserving working farm and forest land. Then there's specific action items that speak to looking at. Uh, you know, full range of land conservation tools, you know, reconsidering local tax abatement program. Uh, those kinds of things.
Is that something that can be hyperlinked from the document to where it's in, in the. From here, committed to hyperlink takes us to the section in the document that talks about it. Is that, that's missing right now, I think.
It's possible, the, my hesitation only is that in, for several of these. Either commitment statements or actual action statements, there's a one-to-many or many-to-many relationship. Some of them do multiple things, so. But the hyperlinks can get.
I guess I feel like it would be okay to have a list of values that all, that don't, and I don't think they all have to lead to. An action, they can just be community values, so that they underlie. You know, the thinking, but they don't, I don't know that there has to be an action for every item.
I agree, but it feels like that we should, you know. The committed to is, is, I guess, like, are we used, is, is making decisions based on these values? Say that someplace explicitly.
Yeah, I, I, I had a hard time drawing from, we are committed to this, to the text of the document where. Tied into something, it said, I was, yes, we got some great resources, and there's a section that talks about resources. But the connection between we're committed to resources and here are the resources, just, they didn't meld easily. So following that thread would be nice.
Is committed to not the right terminology, are there, is there a better word to use?
Jericho cares about, these are Jericho's priorities, things.
Values, Jericho values. Values that underlie, that should underlie policies and decision-making.
Essential elements of Jericho's, Jericho's character. This, this is what Jericho is about in a real way, so.
I hear values and priorities in there more than committed to.
Yeah.
It's also amusing about the chapter name, like somehow stewarding natural resources and ecosystems, stewarding natural resources and fostering climate resilience. Likes, so, we use the word community a lot, and this, it, this is, feels like a, a different. This is a different kind of community, this is not necessarily a human community that we're focusing on here, so it's making that distinction. I know it makes for a wordy title, so I, they, they are imperfect.
So.
Well, I think part of that was.
No, just, just the chapter.
The chapter heading was.
The chapter title.
Yeah, the chapter title was if the, if our, if we, the town wants to be a resilient town.
I see.
Then we need to take care of the natural systems.
And stewardship being that important concept of, we have to be stewards of the resources that we, we have taken responsibility for.
Could say stewarding a resilient town.
Right.
Compass the geography of the land.
Right. Right, or stewarding a resilient retirement.
Jericho.
A resilient Jericho, is that what you just said?
Yeah, but that, that, that sort of speaks a little bit differently to me, like, it's about like social services or things that make humans resilient.
With not, with the use of the word steward.
I mean, it's, it's, it's on, starting on page nineteen, natural systems and services for client resilience. So you've got your resilience in there, it talks about the role of.
What about stewarding resilient land? Like, do you, are you Wendy saying? I guess it's, it depends on whether or not you think of the chapter as like stewarding the, the stuff versus. The peo, the, the stuffs makes the people. Be able to be healthy and withstand climate change and do all those other things, like the people are the beneficiaries of these policies. But also the habitat is the beneficiary.
It's both.
It's both, I mean, you don't want, the habit, protection and habitat has inherent value regardless of how humans benefit.
Wording resilience in the face of climate change?
I'm, I'm not sure if climate change has to be in the title because it's broader than that.
Yeah.
It, it feels, it feels like, and maybe we don't have to.
All right, we'll think about it.
But it's just, I just wanted to put it out there. So I mean, there, there are places where we can shorten it, because there's resilience, or you know, there's just redundancy in, in some of the. Um, language, I, but we've gone through that again, there are a couple of words that I read, I'm like, uh, like, the truly blessed and wording. My personal perspective, it should be a bit more secular, some references to, um, historical. Oh, where was that?
Settlement patterns.
Settlement, but what page was that?
I think it's twenty-three and twenty-four.
Right, settlement pound, the cup carved out of the vast wilderness, that, that to me felt like we definitely need to change that line, because that sort of. Um, hints that no one else was living in this land when people started to settle Jericho, and we know that that's not true.
They just didn't cover up the land the way, way settlers.
Yeah, it's always, this language like that, and I, I gave, I, I don't have to say all of them, there wasn't that many, but there are, there are a few places I was like, hmm. Let's, let's, um, you know, tell a different story, a different narrative. I don't want to dominate the conversation, Sabina, do you have your notes?
I, I do, I have the chapter in front of me, um, I. I agree with what you have said so far, um, and. I, I think, I think in this chapter I would agree that, um, we have to make it clear. Like, where did I, so yeah, so, um, in the, in the, in the town of Jericho is committed to. Um, the improving access to outdoor recreational opportunities in nature. I mean, I definitely think that's important, but I'm not sure that that's what the stewardship is primarily about. Like, like was already said, that we have to, we're stewarding for the inherent, um. Worth of the natural resources and the fact that we can recreate on them, I think is separate. And maybe not front and center. Um. Because I think it detracts from. The, the wildlife and just the things that are just living and making a living and not.
So maybe that, that just is more about connectivity or vibrancy, so just relocate it.
Yeah, I'm not saying we shouldn't mention it, I'm just saying, it, it, of, of those things, that one seems to stand out as being different.
Okay.
Um, so, um, and then, you know, again, because we're on a time crunch here. I'm not gonna go through the, the details, but I agree that, um, like, we have to make a decision universally across the document. Are we, are we having, like, for example, in this chapter, priorities for the future, right? It seems like that whole section, um, needs to go somewhere else. And maybe be refined, but you know, it's like. That to me doesn't fit in the bigger pattern that I would see throughout this document. It's the same thing that you've already said. Sometimes we talk about, um, you know, how to fix things and, and what, and sometimes we don't. So whatever we decide, we have to be consistent throughout the chapters. And I would, I would say what, what you guys are already saying is to put some of these things as links. Um, instead of within each chapter.
I can pick up on what you were saying. I can pick up on what you were saying, Sabina. I would look at the priorities for the future. As being almost the opening part of all of this, because that's what we're trying to do. And then the next step is here's all the background of why those are priorities for the future. Instead of burying that lead in the end of the section. Put it up in the front of the section. To the same thing that you were saying.
Right, or, or somehow get there another way, you know, like.
Yeah. But give it to somebody right up front for, for the person who's going to read the headlines and nothing else.
Yeah.
Here's the priorities. You want to know the details? Here's the appendix.
So like in a text box, it's in, it's intended to be, and you, you're right, there's inconsistency. Because some chapters lend themselves better than others to this, but it's intended to be the cue up to, these are the things that we need to do. These are, these are the kind of the next steps, but. You know, a text box up front that, you know, here's the Cliff Notes version of this section. These are the things that we need to do.
My, my approach to a lot of writing that I do is, I've got about thirty seconds to get your attention. And after that, you're gone.
Yeah.
So my thirty seconds, I have to say something that matters to you. Gets the point across, and then if you want to read more, here's an appendix, go at it.
I have, um. A question for Sabina and one more observation. So Sabina, I, when I was reading through this document and other places. Or this chapter and other places through the document, like sometimes it's the word protect, sometimes it's conserve. When we're talking about, you know, generally about land. Um, protect, conserve, preserve. And I know they have different annotations and I'm curious about your perspective.
That's a good question. Um, to me, the word. Conserve is the one that has the most, um, varied and often misunderstood usage. Because for a lot of us, um, conservation is a, is a permanent easement. That provides legal protection for out forever. Um, but it's not always used in that context, so. I guess what we can do as a commission and, and the conservation commission can also help with this is to figure out. You know. When, when one is more desirable than another, but it is, they are thrown around in very. Um, interchangeable ways when they're not always interchangeable. Um, so. Yeah, and, and because if we don't mean, if we don't mean, if we're not saying that we should be permanently protecting areas. Then we should at least clarify that in terms of the word conservation.
And then what was your observation?
Oh, I was just, I'm, I think it might have been hindsight for example, I read that one too, Sarah, like. They put in a, in a text box, they put some of their text from the future land use. Chapter, which I know is a required chapter for the state. They put it in the chapter in which. Um, the priorities and everything else was, and it was being discussed. And I thought that was.
The language or the map or both?
They did just the language, but I was thinking like, oh, what would it be like to have them like it there? Like, so you have it embedded in the document or the chapter in which it's being discussed, but also having as a holistic. Uh, appendix, like have everything all together in the appendix.
Okay.
I don't know whether that's the right way to go, but I thought it was an interesting idea.
Yep. Okay, anything else on this chapter? That can't be communicated to David in an email?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, so then we're going to move on to housing.
Taking notes in multiple places.
Okay. And we have Linda taking notes and also Nancy's taking notes. So well, you'll have a lot of.
Housing.
Material. Housing was Eric, Sarah and Chris. Okay, so this is kind of a summary of the draft, what the draft talks about. Choice and diversity, the resolution, critical next steps.
Which is. So I thought in this section. You could keep the intro page. You could keep the housing resolution piece. And you could keep an edited version of the critical next steps. And the rest of it could go in volume two.
I second that.
Yep. And I had a couple of points around that as well, that. There's some things in there that just, and, and this is not necessarily for here, but just some definitional issues that we should, we should talk about, um, for where they are. But that's details.
Oh, right, I didn't get into words.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what you said is fits with my statement as well. Yeah. Short, sweet, to the point at the beginning, and if you want the details.
And David, sometimes you called it priorities for the future and sometimes you called it critical next steps, depending on the chapter. Are those different to you or are they the same? They're the same? Okay.
Yeah, there was one point I also saw that was on page twenty six on housing choice and diversity. Some of the language there almost seemed to imply that the town of Jericho needs to invest in some of the. Uh, creation of new housing choices rather than it being something that we want to create the opportunity for. Just wording, but it's. It's different to say Jericho as a town should invest in versus Jericho as a town should make it possible for people to do this. Or easier for people to do this.
So, I'm sorry, I was writing, um, the, the beginning part of that statement. Was you, there were places where it suggested otherwise.
Suggest that the town of Jericho should make the financial investments rather than the town of Jericho should create the opportunity. For third parties to make those investments.
Okay. Um. Nine times out of ten, it's creating the opportunity, but. If you. If you want to. Swim in the deep end of the pool of housing, then the town could be. Taking active measures to acquire land. And see its actual development for that purpose.
Could be, the language leaned towards must.
Okay.
But the town is doing that.
In some places.
Right. Has, has already started.
I, I don't believe it is an appropriate course for us to say the town should make. Substantial financial investments of this type without having voters of the town saying, yeah, we really do want to spend that kind of money on it. I'm all for affordable housing, I want more of it. We need more of it. The town itself has to be willing to say we're going to bond for this kind of stuff, and I don't see that. At present in our towns and some of the language of the text on this. Implies that bonding or whatever form you want to use should be done.
I think we might get it towards wordsmithing, but I do think it's important.
It is words.
To emphasize that the town will have to play a more action role if we're going to get. Anywhere with most of these objectives.
Hence, hence the push for water and sewer. Which is an appropriate.
But yes.
But that is getting down into the weeds and we don't need to be in the weeds today.
Okay, ready to move on? Uh, the next one is building a or creating vibrant community. Growing a vibrant community. I need my verbs, I need to put my verbs on the list.
So this is economy. What, Joy?
Um, okay, so this was Eric, Sarah, Heidi. Eric, you're on a roll.
Uh, same comments as before, the Jericho is, Jericho, town of Jericho is committed to. These are things, uh, that we want to talk about is why we're doing it, so continue to keep those there. A lot of wordsmithing that I came up with it. Uh, making my pages right.
It's been about ten minutes trying to figure out what the icon was. I thought it was like an owl. And then once I saw the owl, I couldn't unsee it.
What is?
Yeah, what?
There are two people holding up a heart.
I'm not seeing that.
What I saw the first few times I looked at it, it took me a long time to read that.
It's, I asked Liz about, you know, icons for, and different icons and different colors for these things that we could then you replicate. Uh, as reference points, so.
I don't. I, I'm goofing too, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
Hey, anything else on this section, Sarah?
Yes, I did. Comments, I really liked the infographic on page thirty seven. I don't know why, it feels to me, I feel like that's a lot more than all the paragraphs. For me, that cut to the chase. Um. I guess. I, I mean, I would just say the same thing as, as the previous section is that you could. Keep the beginning and the rest could be somewhere else. Yep.
There was one other thing I did see in there, and it's part of it might just be wordsmithing or, or maybe not, but. Um, we have a comment in there that talks specifically about avoiding big boxes. And, uh, supporting local communities. Wordsmithing, but I don't think we want to say we're excluding companies from doing business in Jericho. I don't think we'd win a court case on that, and I think that's probably not the right way to phrase what we want, which is more local businesses.
Right.
But to say we don't want a big box store here. Yeah, I agree, we don't want it.
Yeah.
I don't think we can write that down.
Yeah, I agree, there's a liability there.
I thought there was some contradiction though with that too, but even when we're saying. We don't, we're looking for local businesses, but we want a pharmacy.
Right.
Right, like, so that's a country.
Those go, those are back to back.
Yeah.
This is what we want more of. Oh, but not that kind.
Right.
Wait, that's kind of the only kind.
Yeah.
There are very, very few independent pharmacies.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
So pu- part of that, of course, is driven by this concern about. Williston being like, Berlin, it's like, try to put. Uh. A concept in people's minds of, of the, the scale and nature of the kinds of businesses that we would envision in the future. And particularly, you know, large national chains do have a. Destroying effect on local economies and a lot of communities have regulations that specifically prohibit them successfully. But.
Yes, and I think we could work on that, but is that one of the goals?
Right.
In this time plan?
It's, it's not a.
It's not a regular scheme that exists today, so I agree with Eric that it's a liability to put it in writing. I'm not saying I disagree, that I actually totally agree that I don't want big box stores. But it's really big language.
And, and to a certain extent excluding big box stores is. Income exclusionary.
Yeah.
Not everybody can afford to shop at the.
At the Jericho market.
Yeah.
Um, I did like the focus on economic diversity overall, I will say that. And, and I guess I would just say in the. Before this shuts off here. In the very first, um, section. Um, the blue section. That's in time writing here. The last bullet is about infrastructure and I would put that first and the last.
I'm sorry, sir, where are you?
In the blue box, that's.
The committed to.
Things that you're committed to, the. Fifth bullet is creating the conditions for ne- necessary for diversifying and expanding our local economic base by. First bullet, investing in community infrastructure. I would put that first, not last on the page.
In that list, in that bullet, it goes that way too, but like.
I feel like everything that we continue to say about that, it just needs to always be first on the list. If people take the trouble to read this, that they need to have that reinforced over and over again about why that's the overarching. Why on the getting it done list, that's number one.
This was not my chapter, but I read everything too, Eric.
Go for it.
Thank you, I was afraid I was the only one.
But I, and I'm not quite sure what the, what the it is, but under the healthy and inclusive community, I'd like. And I'd like to have a conversation with a D E I committee about this more because. I, I feel like we can do more here, but I'm not sure what that more is. I, i- if that chapter or if that paragraph. Subheading is really calling out inclusive community, it feels like it needs to be more than it in, in, in like its current state. So maybe that's a placeholder.
So Heidi reviewed this chapter and she said the same thing. She said she would like to see the D E I task force. Read and comment on inclusion and, um, more specifics around what that means. She said that she really liked and would want to keep. The, um, attention to both, to health and both physical and mental health and social interactions. And she said there was, there's a good segue from this section to the section on building community and inclusion. Um, and then she had some wordsmithing items. She said similar about. That churches should be called places of worship, something more generalized. Um. And. She s- suggested just a little bit of explanation around infrastructure here. That it might be the first place where it really appears, or no, I guess it appears in housing, but. If somebody's just reading, e- each chapter should be able to stand alone, and she said, what does that mean? Is that roads, water and wastewater? Um. And. Then she said, sort of, what's the difference between the. Town is committed to box and the critical next step box. Because of like what Sarah just said, if infrastructure would go first in the committed to, then next steps is. Oh, is a repeat of some of that. So as we think about each of those sections and what their purpose is in the document. Like, yes, they're connected and reinforcing, but without being duplicative.
Yeah, I had a quick question too, on a critical next steps, again, not to, I don't want to get stuck in the weeds or wordsmithing. I wanted to know the intention of the dot, 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 just like creating more and diverse housing opportunities, growing a vibrant local economy is. Going to require at least two very important things, dot, dot, dot.
It's just a follow to.
Right, so generationally, that is sort of passive aggressive offensive. The dot, dot, dot. If you ever tech the millennials. I encourage you to stay away from that, and it can be grossly misinterpreted. So possibly a pollin.
That's something I never heard.
Look, we're gonna offend, yeah.
Like, maybe we could avoid it this.
Yes.
There was a movie that, that, that had a very specific implication.
That's not the one I'm referring to. I'm familiar with the content.
I appreciate that.
Okay, we're doing great, you guys. Really, a lot of good input information. Ready to move on? Yes, okay, connected.
Okay, this one's a tone, because there's so many different topics in here that need to, need some sort of a touch.
That's my first. It could be, like, what about moving services to effective governance? Because they're all, most of these here are a function of municipal government.
Is that like fire protection and safety?
Recreation, public safety, fire safety, public transit, public health, sanitation.
Yeah.
Yeah, those, those seem more like government.
Except maybe transit, because this is about connectivity. Fire and safety, I had the same.
Public safety, emergency planning, recreation, education and lifelong learning, the last three bullets. Are perhaps more function of government. They're more service related, with the exception of the infrastructure that schools require. Infrastructure that recreational facilities require, but.
I mean, well, right, lots of these are. Functions of.
Transportation and public transit seem pretty related.
Oh, for sure.
Yes.
Right, so like we, if we bumped up public transit and to keep it connected to transportation infrastructure.
That is, is already part of mobility.
Yeah.
So that would stay here.
Yeah.
Where were you guys talking?
We're talking about creating a connected community.
No, I know, but I'm looking at it and I still can't follow where the heck you are. Um.
The purple box is on forty four, like just as organizationally.
The, the three boxes that say. The, the info infographic, that's the three boxes, one is infrastructure, one is facilities, one is services. Um, that just totally throws me off. I went back through your, the text in relation to that and. I, I couldn't make direct. I, I couldn't make direct connections between that graphic and the stuff that followed, so I think, well, get rid of it or refine it or make sure that what follows matches that, that same pattern, that seems, you know, that it's, that you're, you can say, oh, okay, they're starting with infrastructure, because you started with mobility and transportation, and then you went to infrastructure, right? But in your graphic, infrastructure is the header. Anyway, not to be, not, you know, to get what I'm saying, that one didn't flow. It didn't flow very well for my brain.
So I, I see public safety and emergency going into the government, effective government chapter. I'm not sure about recreation, because that would stay here in my mind also, because it's really linked so much to, to mobility and transportation and infrastructure and community, right? And then kind of the same thing.
Sorry, I, I think, one of the terms that I think I've heard used is the social infrastructure, right? So that is the library and that is the, the different social organizations within a town. So if we can, maybe we can use that same terminology to, to link what we mean by that. Um, that there's different kinds of infrastructure, human and non, and built.
Well, physical and social.
Physical, social.
So then, if it were better organized, Wendy, then could, like, the schools and recreation still live here?
Yeah, I mean, the school is, it's kind of like, nothing really meaty on that, it's just, I love our schools and
Yep.
Although, is, is this the one we're talking about how housing impacts schools? Is that, that's in this chapter? Which I get. But I
Is that the right place for that?
Yeah.
Or should that be back in housing?
Yeah, I, I, I go back and forth.
It's a chicken and egg kind of.
Yeah.
And, and if you're talking about what what are the things that are threatening to the school system, it is
Population.
A, a growing lack of school age children.
Right.
And that, that needs to be called out when you're talking about the schools.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think, so again, my take on this was keep the intro page. But however you break out the infrastructure, facilities, services, boxes, I understand those are, could be better worded maybe, but the basic premise of breaking those out, I think is good. And then I would do just a list format with one or two priorities each for everything else, transportation, wastewater, stormwater, water, broadband, energy and education. And then all, everything else goes in volume two. So for education, it could be two bullet points, like the school age population is declining and, you know, as a negative, and then the positive, you know, I don't know, but the other one would be stated again how the schools are, but I just think it could be just really pared down.
Yep. But remember, there are a lot of people who are going, you, you hope, the, the goal is, there are a lot of people who are going to read this plan that don't have all of the background information that you have, and you, you have to make at least some of the argument of why are these things important, because they're never going to read the
But if you make too many of the arguments, they're not going to read the document. That's my take. I'd rather have them read the document, see the bullet points, and then ask a question. Come back to us and say, hey, what's up with this? We're like, oh, glad you asked, here's, you know, page two hundred and thirty-three and volume two is, that's where it is.
Right.
I mean, no, because I, I'm just afraid that it's not going to be a usable document.
No, I, I don't say that in, in the, that we shouldn't, that there's not a lot that can come out of there, it's just, I think there's you have to be careful because you, this is your, this is your, your elevator speech to make the argument as to why, why this is important.
It's not that it's not going to be in the town plan, it's just not going to be in the concise, prioritized upfront.
Right. Yeah, but again, to your point, if it's a ten second elevator pitch, you want more?
Go here. Right. Yeah.
And ninety percent of the people won't go further. Just the human nature.
Exactly.
Exactly. Whether they agree or disagree with it, they're not going to go further themselves. Why bore them to death?
So we're, we're, we're taking a bit of that alternative energy out into an appendix, right? Because that's, that gets, that, this is one of those chapters that gets a lot of detail.
I think that, I think for energy, you know, I think it needs to be one of these top category or items, and I think we have a couple of priorities for it. Could be simply as conservation and generation. And not to say that it's not important, but we, you know, prioritize it and give a link to all the
You know, we, we've got that in the chapter now, where you've got a chapter on the roads, you've got a chapter on communications, you've got a chapter on water, okay. In the back.
That's kind of my take on it, but
Something that did hit me, and this is
And I'm agreeing with you, yeah.
Um, and I, it does appear as an action item, I believe, in the future action, but because I read this document over the weekend, stormwater management is, like, you know, it's like, are we emphasizing stormwater management enough in the plan? Is it, how's it showing up in our action items? Is it like, if it's like years four to eight, I don't think so, you know? It, it feels like we have to elevate that a bit.
As an action.
Yeah.
It almost seems like what we're saying is that if, if it's going to be in volume one, then it needs to have a, like, so what? So what are we going to do about it? And if we don't have a, so what, what are we going to do about it answer? Then we should be questioning whether or not it should be in volume one.
Except I do think it's okay, for example, to have a list of values in volume one.
Yeah.
Those underlie all of this.
Yes.
So I don't think it, and I don't think you, I think you can have a value without having an action item attached to it.
Right, as long as it's clear, what it is, yeah, absolutely.
But every action item should be tied back to a value.
Sure. Yes, right. Yeah. It should implement that objective, like, gold.
And maybe some nothing, like preserve it or protect.
Our actions should show why it ties back to supporting the business. We don't need a specific action to support it, it's everything else. They need to crosslink.
Okay, anything else on connected community?
I was really surprised, it's only fourteen miles of private roads in Jericho. That seems remarkably low, because I don't believe Jericho has, as a town, taken on a new private road in quite some time. For all of the development, I may be mistaken on that.
Is that, that's correct?
That's
Data?
Beechlands data.
Wow.
Data that the town reports to Beechlands.
Wow.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, effective community. So that's the only one that's different from the question of the month, because before they, we were calling it strategic, now it's effective, which I think is a better wording.
I'm sorry, I, I want to go back there, there's a paragraph on wastewater that we have. And there is a statement in there that I really believe we need to be very careful in saying, which is a statement that the town should do something to help the private wastewater systems. And I
Is it wastewater or water?
Uh, it's wastewater comments. Comment on private wastewater systems that we have in here. It's on
Yeah, I saw that too, I agree with you, Eric, I think that's a slippery slope.
Yeah.
What, page forty seven?
Uh, page forty seven, yeah.
I think, I think it's water, I think it's above wastewater.
Yeah, just right above the, right above the bolded wastewater.
Correct.
Yeah, Jericho needs to find ways to ensure that small community water and wastewater systems and private roads do not become an unwieldy burden. And that kind of implies we at the town of Jericho are going to do something about this.
Yeah, that's the Milo White conversation in that shell, I'm very hesitant to make that kind of a statement.
Yeah.
Somewhere it's not in that line, but some, somewhere there is a connection made with, if and I'm paraphrasing here, if you had a community, a private water system that was in the village area or close, close to where an existing public service is and that service is, is being expanded, those are the things you look to. Can we connect this to an existing service?
That comes at the end of that section, that, they're both in the same section.
Right. So if you read it, if you read it from the lens of what you just said, that you're near a future area of municipal
Yeah.
service, that's one thing.
That's one thing, but
If you read it through the Milo White lens, that paragraph says, let's make a plan to bail them out so that it's not an unwieldy burden on the residents they serve, and I fundamentally disagree with that. If you, as a private road, undertake the construction of your home as part of a shared wastewater system or a shared well, you share the responsibility for having a succession plan for those potable water and wastewater systems, the town should not go to your private subdivision and fix those problems for you if and when they become problems and you as a subdivision and, and as an incorporated homeowners association with shared resources have not set aside the money
Done the capital planning for the replacement of the system.
The town should not bail you out, so that's where that paragraph is, is the hard no for me.
Just if, if I may, because we are a public group.
Yeah.
I believe the town should not be obligated to do it.
Correct.
Town may choose to do it.
Correct.
But should not be obligated.
Right. But that's where I agree that that language is a slippery slope.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to building an effective community, which is basically about governance. And this was Chris, Heidi and Sabina. Want to go first?
Sure.
Uh huh.
No, I would keep the intro. I would keep a trimmed version of the effective slash inclusive governance section. And I would keep the recommendations for changes in the town governments, govern, governance.
I agree with that. I also just want to make sure that we do the same thing where we're saying these, these are things that um, would be beneficial and that, you know, we we, we think are going to help us create the conditions that we need to succeed in this, but I don't want it to feel like it's the only thing and that there aren't other things that would possibly be, be valuable in addition to these things. I don't want it to be locked in. But other than
Oh, sorry, Sabina.
No, no, that's fine.
I did have a, this is a tiny bit of wordsmithing, but I, in my mind, the town manager is an additional role to the town administrator.
It's a different role, yes.
So the way it's worded in here, it sounds like you're suggesting that the town administrator would become the town manager, and I think it's two people, two jobs.
I picked that up as well.
So just check on that wording, because it, it appears to be to say that the town administrator role should be changed to town manager.
So it is suggesting that the role of the town administrator be changed to that of the town manager? Because they're, because they're different, they have different functions.
But I'm not sure, then are you thinking the actual person, who is the current town administrator?
It could be.
But I'm not sure that he would necessarily be the right person to be the town manager, so I, I just want to
That becomes a different question, but it's, it's, a town administrator is, is one thing, and a town manager is defining statute.
Does anybody ever have both?
You wouldn't have both.
You eliminate one to have the other.
You eliminate the, the role, the function, the individual who sits in the seat is a different matter. And this is only speaking to that function, because the town manager function has a statutory responsibility to take on certain, certain duties and responsibilities for the town, which takes as much as anything, it takes the day to day management of the, the organization of the town, the entity of the town of Jericho.
You're not going to, I don't see how it's realistic for to hire somebody to say, you're going to do the current town administrator's job, and you're going to do this other even more important job. It's not
The job of town administrator goes away.
Goes away, and the town, the town manager may then, you, you may then fill that, fill that workload with you might, you might have, need to have another position in there to make that work.
An assistant administrator.
That's kind of the, the the last point here about increasing staff capacity.
All my, my point is just that there's two full-time jobs worth of work.
Yeah, yeah.
However, that gets I, I don't, yeah, doesn't matter, but
So, Chris, in the beginning, just so that I understand, you're suggesting get rid of basically the top three bullets and focus on the spreading the burden, sharing the load?
Well, I, I agree with the partnerships concept, I agree with taking the lead concept, I agree with all those things. I just want to make this section dramatically shorter.
Shorter.
So if there's a way to list those in a really short and concise way, I, I think that's fine, I just want it to be fundamentally
Yeah. I, I think the first two, you know, there's, there's certainly a lot of verbiage in there that could be eliminated. What, what, in my mind, what is really important about, what taking the lead is trying to say is that there are, there are situations where the town is going to have to take the lead and make this thing happen. Infrastructure primarily, of course, regulation, changes to the regulations to affect the change we're talking about. There's going to be building some roads, if you want to see the, the road network in the commercial district or in Riverside or other things, the town has to take a leadership role in making sure the roads go where you want them to go, do what you want them to do rather than rely on a developer to do that for you, so that's why I ask, because I think there's some important points that I'm trying to hit on in that particular piece. And the tables here, I can appreciate that they get a little confusing, they're just kind of rainstorms about what are the tools, what are the processes that communities use in order to actually do that kind of work? They have an official map, they have, they have road standards, they do capital plan.
Heidi's feedback on this chapter were mostly wordsmithing that I think, I mean, they're, they're good comments, but they're, I think she's making suggested if you change this word or change this sentence, then it would come across. Um, I think she's questioning the chap, the title of the chapter, like we talked about for the other chapter, building an effective community. Um, she's saying, what about meeting future demands through effective governance or building expertise and leadership capacity? Something to that effect, I think she thinks it's maybe a little too vague. Um, she thought it'd be helpful to describe the skills of the town, of a town manager that we don't currently benefit from, like, why would that be such an important change? Why would that be such a, a good improvement? Um, and then she commented about the range that the range, just really being clear that the range is a physical location and facility operated by the government, it's not like a thing, she said the range, the range has plans, I think is the sentence, and she's like, the range is not a person or a business. The range is nothing, it's the Or a business, the range is nothing, it's the government. Um, and then she had a few other things.
What's the, what was sort of like the intention behind that of the chart on page sixty one? The community's role in general, the community's role.
Yeah, I'm.
For.
I'm questioning my, its value, uh, myself. When I, when I first put it together, it was kind of thinking through, you know, these. The community plays a role in making things happen.
Mm hmm.
Um, through goals and policies or the regulations, uh, making an investment. Um, acquiring land and actually developing things. Those are kind of the, the furthest that most communities end with. Uh, regulation. Uh. Particularly rural communities, as they get bigger, then they begin to build public infrastructure. Um, but it's, it's trying to illustrate that.
Well, maybe. So maybe it's a, it's a good point to make, though, that. Up until now, all Jericho has done is to. Quantificate about goals and priorities and create regulation. And that we've done minimal investment, minimal acquisition and no development, and that the, one of the main. Outcomes of this plan is that eight years from now. We're going to be further along this spectrum in terms of interventions.
Maybe presented as a.
Like here.
Levels of maturity of a town's planning.
Right, like here's what we do now, and by the end of eight years, we want to be here, and that the. Staff capacity growing is enabling that.
Mm hmm.
Evolution.
And David, when you use the word community here, you're talking about specifically the town government.
Yes.
Yeah, Heidi had that too. Like who? Like staff or politicians or residents or volunteers?
Um, and if we're using the heading effective and inclusive, inclusive governance, I'd like to really. Define what we mean by inclusive, and I think, again, that's a conversation I'd like to have with the.
Okay.
DEI committee, and maybe there's a goal statement that comes out of that, that is, would move us forward into a more. Um, inclusive and equitable government.
Mm hmm.
Structure.
Because the people in, when we went over question of the month and we heard from people who said maybe or no. And they said, I don't think this is an appropriate role of the government. Those are the. Those are people who are happy that Jericho has stayed in its, this narrow lane. They don't want to make the move.
Right.
But seventy percent of the people that we, you know, at least of this subset, which is not statistically perfect, but whatever. Want us to, to evolve, to become more proactive. And having that clearly illustrated, I think will make, you know, the naysayers. Less happy, but the people who want us to do stuff more happy, and that's really. You know, the plan and the dialogue about the plan is to facilitate the conversation, like everybody's not going to be happy, but. I think we're clear that the majority. Of a planning commission and the majority of the citizens want the town to evolve.
Right.
And we have to stand up and take the hit for that.
I think, you know, to Wendy's point, we need to define what do we mean by inclusivity? Does it include inclusivity? Is it? Gender, is it racial? What kind of inclusivity are we talking? Because there are lots of inclusivity you can have.
Mm hmm.
And by nature, we as a planning commission and most of us in this room. Aren't relatively exclusive group. We're homeowners in Jericho with enough time to spend to go into town planning activities.
Yeah.
We go back to the declaration of conclusion and that provides, you know, more definition for what. The term means, but just to have it as a header, but not address it.
Mm hmm.
It feels like there's a missing piece of either we address it or we take it out of the header.
Dangling participle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we're moving on to future land use.
I like the maps and thank you for putting in the connectivity and the hap, on the habitat plots. Where I sort of like went. Is the detail in some of the, um. Um, in, in the chart, in the charts, in the tables, because some of the stuff we just never have talked about or vetted in any way. And it felt like it, it says that it's not zoning, but it reads like zoning. And so I was feeling, um, less is more here, because. Like this is, this is things that will be building out over time, but you know, when you start, when we're starting to talk about ceiling heights. I had, um, just like that could just have a lot of. Detractors.
Mm hmm.
Because it. It, I think it opens up. Like a whole nother level of, um, scrutiny.
Yep, it's a little premature.
Very premature.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So too much design detail.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, also, is there a little box? There's no little box in this section.
I know, we need the.
The legend.
No little box. There's no little legend.
The legend.
Like the last five, four slides you showed on the intro page had the little box, colored box, the bullets, take me there. Where is that?
Right.
There's, it's just not consistent with the rest of the document.
Yeah.
I was like, am I in a new section or am I in a different?
Or now I'm in maps.
Now I'm in maps.
But it's actually a map. But it's actually a chapter.
But it's actually a chapter.
Right.
Yes.
Yep.
I think some of the pieces that are mentioned in there is things that should be in the plan are probably. A certain level of premature. Coming out and talking about infill limits around smaller, narrow lots.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Parking in the rear and.
Right.
That's, I don't think that belongs here.
Yeah.
That's actually, a lot of that language comes out of the current town plan. The, the parking, some of the parking stuff, probably that does, but it comes out. The, the point.
Where is that?
Time for it to come out.
The, the, well, I mean, you're. You're stating some basic design intention around how you want. How you want the community to. To function.
But I think what we want to focus on here is the why, which is so that it's pedestrian friendly and it's. A lively streetscape and you can walk from building to building and you. That the why and then the how is later on.
Yeah.
Without specifying parking in the rear and.
Hmm.
Yeah, too granular.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm hmm. Um, for natural resource protection, I think. As I said, for the other part, the other chapter, um. It feels to me like a comf, a little bit of a conflict when we say that. Natural resources protection, silviculture and outdoor recreational activities are the highest priority. Um, I guess I, I, we're just learning so much more about how our recreation impacts. Um, the natural world, um, way more than what we think. And it's kind of, that's kind of developing, you know, as we speak, um, if anyone's. Wants to read, uh, watch Sue Morse's presentation about this, um, she talked about it in reference to the Richmond. Community Forest, but you know, it applies everywhere, but the bottom line is, we, we just don't even have. Enough information about how we impact the natural resources of our, with our recreation. So I would like to keep those two things separate. As a, in the, in the table that says land use priorities. Um.
So maybe access recreation is related to the mixed use centers and residential infill, because it's the people that live there that need the access. Rather than.
I just, if, if we're talking about this future land plan with natural resource protection area, then, um. I just, I just want to separate.
Yeah.
Outdoor recreation, it can, it can still be, if we can figure out a way to get it to be in there, I'll have to think about it some more. But to me, it doesn't, the, the weight should not be the same in that one bullet point. So.
So I just have a separate, as a separate bullet Sabina, Sabrina?
Um, yeah, let me think about it some more, but yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, Sabina, am I. Interpreting you correctly that you're proposing that some of these areas be effectively off limits for human interaction, unless you're one of the chosen few? Because that's kind of what I'm interpreting you to say. I want to make sure that I'm not. That that's not what you're saying.
I'm saying that. We should not be necessarily protecting these resources and thinking that outdoor recreation is benign. At use of the natural resources. That both can exist. And both can exist on the same place, but that we have to. Understand that there are some places where. We would want to give more weight to the natural resources and the, and the, the wildlife. And, and keep the recreation in, in a less critically important area.
Right, there, there are some natural resources or critical areas that are so sensitive that you don't want to in, introduce. Human activity. When there are others where, you know, it, it's not a big deal.
It's a little bit more compatible in some areas than others. What?
Are we preserving those spaces for the elite few who get to see it?
Just don't take your dog.
I, I'm, I don't think I'm putting a label of elite or not elite. It's about the moose and the bear and. Those animals deserve a place that is not. Um. Interfered with.
It would, I think what, one solution to this would be, a, as Sabina initially said, was to just not group them in the same place. Have them as two separate items.
Yeah, a separate, a separate bullet.
A sign. We don't need to get into the weeds of what it actually means. It just means that there, we have both values, we value both of those. But you can't, you don't, they don't necessarily get achieved together.
Always.
In one lock. What that means down the road, we'll figure out.
Mm hmm.
Okay, and what else about future land use? Um, Heidi said the sentence that says the palette of future land use areas are hierarchical and connected. With scale, diversity, intensity is super wonky. She said, I have no idea what that means. Um, she said the maps are great. She was unclear about the flood areas. The, the legend wasn't quite clear. She thought maybe it was her computer. Um, she said, are we missing conservation for wildlife corridors? Um, so maybe a mention of corridors.
But I, I think to that end, I would say that. Um, the. The corridors are being, well, we know that we need north, south connections and we need east, west connections. And for the most part, when we look at the stuff that is in the natural resource protection. Um, we, we have the potential for that, right? But where I see, um, us needing to make. Choices at, you know, maybe not even in this iteration of the town plan, but in our lifetimes. Is when we get to like the residential infill, because once that gets filled in, then. Those connections are going to be lost. And so, um, again, I'm not saying, don't. That we shouldn't have residential infill, but I think we should at least think about it on a big picture level of. Like, when do we say when? You know, when, how do we, how do, how do we protect those corridors, those, those? How do we keep those, um, larger blocks connected? It's right now to get from east to west, you have to go through some kind of residential area.
Yeah, I think she was saying the same thing.
And, and I, I, for what Sabina is saying, that the bit from Schillhammer all the way over to Brown's Trace that goes through Lee River Nor Road. Currently is relatively forested, but we've designated that for infill. And if that is indeed a viable wildlife quarter, which I think it is, given the number of bear sightings we have near our houses. Maybe we should. Consider not using that as a, as much of that for infill and village neighborhoods. But that's, I don't know if that's, this is the point to be doing that or not.
Hmm. I think we, I think to Eric's point, if, if now isn't the time, we should at least call it out. You know, to say. This needs to be reevaluated every, you know. Every, every time we do this, you know, that we need to, we need to keep track. And have measurable, have a, have a goal, you know, like when. When does it become non-functional?
Right, because you don't want the infill to create islands.
Right.
Um, she then, another comment that Heidi had that no one's mentioned yet is on residential infill. She said the text says. Similar in scale and pattern to what already exists. However. The details of the text and then in the chart actually move us towards higher density, which we have all discussed.
Mm hmm.
So, but then I think she's saying that's, the text is inconsistent. We're not, we're not going to be similar in scale. We are going to be. Moving towards higher density. That's the goal.
Fusters of more compact mixed residential neighborhoods where possible.
Right, so I just, I think she just says similar in scale and pattern to what already exists is not true.
But at the same time, there's a bit there that talks about having that residential infill include four or five unit buildings.
Mm hmm.
Which would be inconsistent with almost every one of those neighborhoods there.
Yeah.
Well, what's inside the building, what's outside the building? True, but. But, and then that's what Heidi's saying too.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, it says both that, you know. Your infill in a similar scale and pattern to what currently exists, this is in the table. And the next bullet is a more compact development pattern, small to very small plots are highly encouraged. Where possible, and if it can be served by shared water, wastewater and stormwater systems.
Mm hmm.
So recognize you can't do, you may not be able to do this everywhere, because you don't have infrastructure necessary, but where you can, you should be able to do it. With greater intensity, greater mixture of building types.
True, so if we're, we want to enable greater density, then we are not. One, I don't have the text right in front of me, but she's saying it's not going to be similar in scale. We want to change. We don't want to just keep doing it the way that it is, which is what she's saying the text said.
Yeah.
Now. Okay, we don't have time to go to getting it done, because now we're, it's at eight forty five and Linda wrote down on my piece of paper that we need to be done by eight forty five.
Like getting it done section is super important and maybe needs to be the first.
Yes.
See, not the last.
Yes, and also I think it's almost like the output. Of getting all this stuff kind of revised in a way, I think we'll be in a better position.
And, and I just want to throw out, I think that a lot of the one to three year things could be done in one year.
Hmm.
And we should put a collective pressure on everybody.
Yeah.
Make something happen.
At least a third of the things on that list should say one year.
Well, so, so here's my current thinking about this, right? This is, this is an evolving process. Then instead of having. Kind of short meeting and long term, I mean, maybe, maybe you do, but it is one year. Within the first year, within the first three years, within the first five years. How, how do you project what you're going to do eight years from now? But you can have a pretty good handle on.
Mm hmm.
You know, what that list of things are that you need to do, and I kind of stopped with. Yeah, I could start throwing more things from the other, from the old town plan in here, but I don't know that there's a lot of value to that. So that's why there's nothing, you know, there's not a third table that's long term.
But if it says one to three. I, in my opinion, it's too easy for it to be, oh, three years, we'll get to it.
We got time, we don't need to start it right now.
I think it should be one year, like.
Yeah. Within one year.
We're gonna do this, we're gonna do that.
Yeah.
That sounds like.
I agree.
Mm hmm. Um, and I, I put one together, one more slide of something that I'm, I'm thinking about. Again, this is about trying to help people visualize what are we talking about when we're talking about compact mixed use development? You know, people, some people see Burlington and Williston and other people see, you know, Jericho and Jeffersonville. So. I've been taking a lot of pictures of different kinds of buildings. Most of these buildings are in. Morrisville, Jeffersonville, Stowe, Richmond, there are a couple of outliers, but I won't tell you which ones, and I bet you can't tell. Which, but you know, when we talk about duplexes and triplexes. You know, these are buildings that look like some of the older single family homes that we have here in Jericho. They're just subdivided. Uh, more closely. You know, small multi-family and townhouses, you know, some of these are quads. Um, they may be more than that. Um, these are certainly townhouses. Down here and then mixed use. Uh, buildings. To, to again, try to. Give a sense of what it is that we're talking about.
Yeah.
So instead of. Give a sense of what it is that we're talking about, so instead of saying. You know, no big boxes, we could talk more about, these are the, the types of building types that we're talking about when we. Talk about.
And I think if, if the mixed use images could include a lot from like Richmond. Right, cuz it's right next door, the top one here is Richmond, and it's um. It's, we share so much with Richmond and then everybody here. Has been to Richmond.
And isn't afraid of Richmond.
This is Richmond, likes Richmond.
I think that's a great appendix, um a, a quick comment that I had written down that I forgot to share is that amongst. All the pictures in this document, there are none of dense residential in this town, there's no Lafayette, Sunnyview, Griswold, Pinehurst. Not even Black Walnut. Not, no, no condos.
There's not even a Jericho East or.
There's not Jericho.
Country, any of those.
There's not Country View. And so, I, I also challenge you that amongst and between all of those pictures, there's not a single home that is valued below half million dollars. Which is what we keep saying we need more of, but we need to show that we at least have several.
Something on Starberg would be good to grab right there.
Again, any of those.
Yeah. Do any of you wanna go out and snap some pictures of some of those that you think are great?
Or Sarah, do you have any that you can access, can you use like Little State?
I can't because those really belong to the photographer.
Okay.
Okay, we are gonna take the last, like, few minutes here and um open it up for public comment. Just saying that we are gonna be done, done at nine o'clock, this is not your only opportunity, this has been a really long. Intense meeting, so please be judicious about what you decide to share at this moment. And before I do that, also David, I realize it's very, very hard to sit there and have all of your work. You know, examined and dissected and. This we don't need and that we don't need, and I just wanna let you know that we appreciate all your work and. I know that you can handle the candor, and that's why we selected you as our consultant. So, thank you very much for, I hope you have a nice big like shot when you get home.
But I wanna follow up, it's not, when I say. Keep this and don't keep that, I don't mean that we don't want it, we want it volume two.
It's involved to the volume two.
That's fine.
What's your comment?
I also wanna add, if everyone could please email me if you have, if you typed up comments, can you send them, email them to me so that I can start collecting all of this feedback? That'd be great.
Okay, Chuck. Two minutes, can you do it? Three minutes, can you do it? Okay, but it's not your only.
So, I, I, I thought this was really well done, I, I was, you know, really pleased reading the thing, I mean, it is true.
Do you like the picture?
I, I did notice that.
Yes.
Uh and I, 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 I think some of the casual nature of it should come out, but I thought the arguments were really good, and you know, I. Uh I, I, I thought, I read every word. Um I, my first comment here is yours on the photographs, it reads like a travel brochure, or looks like. You were to look at just the photos, you just say, well, this is an elite town, it's gonna stay that way. And I wanna see manufactured homes, I wanna see nine hundred and fifty square foot, three bedroom homes, I wanna see fourplexes, I wanna see an eightplex. With bicycles and kids and canoes out front, because that's the change. You know, that's, that, that's the change we're looking for. I, I'll encourage you to take the loss of children a little more seriously as sort of a bigger issue, okay? We had six elementary schools and I mean, we've closed one, the only reason we haven't closed more. Is in this arc, we've added a full kindergarten program and a full preschool. Program, we don't need two middle schools anymore. The number one thing we can do to moderate taxes is to increase the number of children. And we have basically decided, we, in the, previously, we wanna be a rich community with rich kids, and we've accomplished that. We have the lowest percentage of children eligible for free and reduced lunch in the state. You know, ten percent of the state average, and the state average is ten times Jericho's rate. I mean, this is serious, you know, it's an equity issue, and it's kinda really kind of a community vibrancy issue, so I would not neglect that. I think a bigger part of the plan needs to be, how do we make Jericho possible for families of modest means? There was not a word in here on childcare. And I think that ought to be kind of a little more front and center, MMU added a birth to three childcare center at no cost. It's possible to really kinda get engaged and to make. The, you know, we need that in terms of the cost of living, we're talking about the cost of living. Childcare is just as big a, you know, is an issue in, in terms of, in the, as, as housing, and I really, I really think there ought to be peace in that. Your role is you are, you're not making, you're not like drafting recommendations for the town. You're drafting a town plan that the select board will be. Endorsing as the town plan, so you're not making recommendations, you are making a plan. And you need to get information from right of people, including the select board, there's some things in here where you need to give them a fill in the blank. When is sewer gonna be done in Jer- in Jericho Corners? Give us a year, like, and, and what are you gonna hold yourself accountable for? This is a town plan, it's not your recommendations. Uh so there's, there's a whole bunch of things where you need to tell us, you need to have the select board fill in the blank. This one to three sort of vagueness is just not, you know, it's simply not gonna cut it. Um I loved your discussion about sort of whether, but you know, uh how many to advance, you know, how many issues to advance, I think all five are really important. Because each has a constituency, and you need to reassure each of those constituencies that, that their thing is in there, so I would, I would. I would complete, I would have the, the full starfish on stuff, everybody can have the leg that they want. I think, oh, on the town, the, uh. And there needs to be like an understanding that if we don't do infrastructure, we don't. Unless we commit, uh if we don't do infrastructure, the whole plan fails, which it has failed for fifty years.
That's what Chris Brown has said.
If we don't. Establish.
Every, every meeting, every phone call.
If we don't establish a government that feeds our ambition, the whole plan is moot, so. This is where it needs to be the select board's plan, it's like, don't. We're gonna, we're gonna wipe out all the happy talk, we're gonna take out the housing, we're gonna do all this, unless you commit. To the town government that's necessary, and unless you give us a date. On when and where the infrastructure is gonna be done, because the plan, you know, your, your credibility around this whole thing doesn't depend on the plan, it. Depends on what actually gets done of the people, and you can't, you know. You can write a beautiful plan, we've been doing it for fifty years, since nineteen, you know, we've been doing it since nineteen seventy-five, we've had beautiful plans. But the, the cycle that you need to break is you need to go to the select board and say, give us a date, what are you gonna be accountable for? And I don't think you, you know, I, I, you know, I think you. I, I think that's a, a big part of the next step. You're the only guy who likes the fifty-five extra pages of regulations for Riverside.
Thank you.
Just, I hope you, you know, that thing needs to be sunsetted. Or changed, because it's by a date, that's something that you guys can put on there, often by the end of the year, because. You, we're trying to build thirty units of housing a year, and thirty-five of them are not gonna get built if that thing doesn't get changed. Also, finally, the plan disregards the recommendations in the tri-town transportation study. So I would encourage you to go back and take a look at that. And there's stuff in there that we can and should be doing, there's stuff in there that we're currently doing that is ridiculous. And I, I, I would either, we spent good money on that, they hired good resources. We got a pretty extensive plan, and so far the town is ignoring it, and I think you ought to pick it up and. Either put it in the plan or come up with a real good reason why. Those recommendations are not, uh not valid for.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate the support, giving a date certain for when these things happen.
Yes, yes.
I'll give you a couple, two minutes, um.
Hi.
Chuck wants to be positive, as do I. I think using climate change in your discussion of our town plan. We have an agency in natural resources, we have the state, we have the EPA, get out of that business, that's just a cheap pull-down. We need to have economic development, we're in a whole new world, HDMI. Fiber optics, kids having to go home and learn from, and learn from home because the school's not safe because of airborne bacteria. We're in a different world, quiet. Every person I talk to in Jericho is fed up with Jake bricks. High-speed trucks, commuters going through our town, we're playing with the stuff. That involves us, when the stuff that really impacts us is the stuff that's going through and around our town, and it doesn't say that. Quiet, life quality. So that you don't have resonance, there's no way in hell, and I've talked to a lot of people. People wanna live in this dream world of developed village centers, they're too loud. The intensity is too great, the infrastructure's not there, and they don't feel safe. Person can't have a dog, so uh. Pocket developments is what Jericho is and has been all about, and yet, you David brought it up very clearly. We prohibit by making everything into a single-family lot, we prohibit. The historical pattern of development in Jericho, where the father and son, the fa- mother and father. Develop their house and then the kids develop theirs, that I can assure you. There's going to be serious legal challenges to continuing to require subdivisions and PRDs. To manage other people's real estate, so property rights should be right up on top. But water capture, everybody's talking about flooding. We've had this agency of natural resources, Army Corps of Engineers, water should be captured where it falls. It should be infiltrated, it should be replenishing our aquifers, and it should not be shunted down the roads, the biggest offenders is government. Not the private developers, because most of us wanna keep the water for the lawns to infiltrate and do it all correctly. And we're highly regulated, but the government is not. Uh cleaning the water. This is really important, uh pavement, curbs, all these things. And salt and sand on the roads are one of the worst things you can do, including pavement. So there's all types of opportunities, but I wanna emphasize safety and organization. Jericho Center Village has a whole bunch of at-risk wells. Because of septic systems that are close proximity and violation of the regulations. Governance is the responsibility of the town to create fire districts so that. Someone like Milo White, Jericho Center, can have a fire district that's enabled. By the town to be able to get access to municipal funds, so that they can amortize doing the right thing. Over the next thirty years, paid for by the people who use it. That's why these homeowners associations are struggling because they don't have the idea about how to use capital, how to use strategic debt. So when you have a thirty percent increase in inflationary cost, guess how cheap it would have been to have borrowed at three percent municipal bonds? And financed it over thirty years, it's cheaper to build the right thing now and borrow the money through municipal resource. And private people can't do it. Some of my notes, I just popped up ten point two five percent. We missed the window, we missed the opportunity, costs are up forty percent, if you wanna move the needle. And Chris has said it, if you wanna do something significant, stop doing what's been done. And do it majorly differently, and it doesn't involve anybody sitting in a seat around here. It involves getting leadership and management involved, use of capital and long-term funding. But I would drop a lot of the buzzwords because it's embarrassed.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else, Maria? Uh, yeah, okay, um, any other comments? Okay, so we are going to, um, thank you very much for your comments and for coming. For the next meeting on August first, I hope that we can deliver a new draft. To the planning commission, we've invited the committees to come, and I think we have an RSVP from most of them. That they're coming to give us their feedback, but we have to try to give them a new draft without having them to redo all their work. So I'm not quite sure exactly how that's gonna work.
We're not planning to produce a new draft between now and August first.
You're not planning to produce a new draft, I know that. I might produce a new draft.
Just, just so you know that we're, we're not. Planning to turn this around into a new draft until. The next, uh till August.
Well, so maybe I misunderstood, so if we have the committees come on the first. Can we get a new draft from you guys by the fifteenth, that includes what, all everything we talked about tonight? And people's hand, people's notes and the input from the committees.
So our plan is to get everybody's feedback and produce a new draft for. I think it's the middle of August.
Yeah, our next meeting after that's August fifteenth.
Yeah, it may not be August, by August fifteenth. I have that as the sixteenth being the deadline. But we can, we can look into that, but basically anticipation of you having a draft that you can. Uh put out. Um to adjacent municipalities and individual planning commission, things like that, so you will have a complete draft. Volume one and volume two.
Two. Okay.
By the sixteenth of August.
It makes, it makes sense to incorporate all the other committees into that, so by the time we get to the fifteenth. It's a complete document with all their comments.
Okay, so the next two meetings are basically more of the same, except that the committees will be us on, be with us on August first.
Right.
And go through the changes that each one of us individually had to talk about that.
Right. Right, but so that at the end of that, we take all of the comments and edit it once.
Okay.
That's the point.
Okay.
And then the timing of, uh the length of time that we have to review volume one and two. We're not, we're not get, do we have that weekend again prior? Cuz I'm hearing you say you're gonna deliver it. Around the fifteenth, but that's when we're meeting.
We delivered on the sixteen, so.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna deliver volume one and volume two as a commission, you've got. Up to and through your public hearing, the changes to the whole inch a lot.
What is the date for our public hearing? Do we have that yet?
We're expecting it to be the second September meeting. Okay, tentative date.
So mid-September.
September nineteenth.
So we have to warn it at the August fifteenth meeting. But we don't have to produce the final draft for that hearing until. Later on, we don't have to have it by the fifteenth when we warn, or we do have to have it when we warn.
Have to have it, uh I think it's, isn't it fifteen days?
You need, you need to, you need to release a complete draft thirty days before your first volume. The public hearing notice is fifteen days before that, so that's where Susan thinking that. If it's the fifteenth, then we are gonna have to try to get it to you.
Right.
In advance of that meeting, so you at least have something in hand. Again, understanding you've got at least another month or more, however you wanna take to make edits to that. But you need to have something to, to. Send out to the adjacent municipalities as your initial draft. By the middle of August.
Sarah.
That sounds tricky.
Yeah.
I. I feel that we're in pretty strong agreement about rearranging some parts of the document, that would make it a lot easier for the committees. At the next meeting to give better feedback and would save a lot of time in their feedback, instead of, I mean, we spent the first twenty minutes.
Right.
Except the, the committees are current, affordable housing is already working on the current draft.
Yeah.
So feeding a second one might just muck up the works.
Okay.
I don't know about the other committees, that's what that one is.
That was kinda what I thought too, but yeah, but it seems like.
Or can we summarize some of the main points of our feedback, give that to them and just say.
So that they don't worry about it.
Here's the sort of uh unanimous feedback about. Overall structural changes we would like to make for the document, not all the small.
Maybe they can get copies of the minutes of the meeting or something to.
Yeah, I'm not sure the minutes are gonna make a lot of. Are gonna be succinct enough.
What about the slides you shared tonight? Can we, I think those would be helpful, cuz they at least kind of attempt to summarize.
Well, it summarizes the draft, but not necessarily. Well, it summarizes the draft, but not necessarily.
Yeah, or I can read the minutes and summarize the changes, but, um.
I think the, the most important thing to get. You are, you are going to be the more, most refined consumers of. How the plan's organized, how does it read, things like that. I think. For the other committees, it really comes back to the substance. Is the substance right? Are the points that we're trying to make the right ones? Are there things that are missing? You know, they don't. They don't need and I wouldn't expect them to get into the, into the weeds in the same way that you will because you're just so much closer to it. They want to make, they should make sure that their primary concerns are in there and addressed in a way that they. Want to see them addressed.
Well, I think most of the committees will pay a lot of attention to their, anything that mentions their particular interest group, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, anything about housing, the Affordable Housing Committee will enter in, and I'm sure the same thing with natural resources and all those.
Yeah, but.
But that's sort of the basic question that we want them to come to the meeting and answer, which is. I'm saying this like a statement, but it's really a question, which is, are your concerns, are the concerns and goals and priorities of your committee? Reflected in the text, in the content? Don't worry so much about the words exactly, don't worry so much about where everything is. But. Is, are you here? Are you, is your committee's world stuff reflected?
Yes, but we're talking about, uh. Potentially significant cuts. Changes to the current draft, where a lot of that content will be involved too, and would they feel the same way about their. Values if they saw.
Well, that's the catch.
We ask them now and say, do you feel happy with this? And then they get the final version and they're like, well, where is it all?
Right.
Well, I wouldn't ask why you're happy. I'd say, does this, as you said, does this address the key concerns you have? What would you change in address?
Or maybe we ask them the same question, which was kind of why I structured it tonight the way I did, like what are the top things that are good? That are not good, but you know, that match up with what you think should be in the plan so that we're not cutting things that. People felt were really important to have stated in there.
But also leave it that to Chris's point that this may be very, very important to you. But in the larger context of the plan, it's going to be in the appendix, in volume two. So I don't want to say.
Yeah. Yeah.
But as long as they know, yes, this, this particular issue was of prime importance to us.
Right.
Somewhere in the plan, it's presented.
Okay, so maybe Linda and I will work on crafting like an instruction for the, an invitation. When they, when they're getting ready to come to try to focus the conversation.
Yeah.
Okay, we need an executive session now. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Wendy seconded, all those in favor. Great job, everybody. Sabina, I mean, did you say I?
I did.